Good evening, everyone. I will call the Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting to order. Roll call, myself, Andre Baumgartner, Councillor David McBride, and Councillor Scott Westervelt are present. Again, I'll call this meeting to order at approximately 5:45 PM. Calendar and communications. I really have none other than, last week, our council took action on some of our, all of our recommendations from the previous council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. And while most of, or all of the appointments outside of the Personnel in Appointments Committee, I'm sorry, all of the appointments with the exception of the Police and Citizens Committee, appointments were done through the consent calendar. A good chunk of folks who were appointed by the, or recommended for appointment by the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting, Committee were not appointed. In fact, they were not afforded a vote and I, we do have the town clerk here who obviously has been a part of, no shortage of of votes or consent calendar votes on Personnel and Appointments recommendations. And in my time in the council, it was definitely a departure from, I shouldn't say status quo, but sort of normal precedent in terms of how we handle most appointments. You know, while typically, you know, councils do honor those appointments, there are a few red herrings here and there where, you know, council has every right to revisit those appointments. But my question to the clerk has more to do with the actual process that we went through to actually approve those and whether those votes, quite frankly, should even be deemed as as having any bearing on or, or a weight. I, maybe I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling to find the exact word I'm looking for, but if you want to speak to that, um, Clerk McHausser.
Sure, I, I know exactly what you're thinking because, you know, when you're on the fly at a meeting, I didn't have the town council rules in front of me. I had to look them up online. And, you know, I, I knew it didn't feel right pulling something out of thin air. It's what it felt like to me. I didn't have a list of candidates. I didn't have a list of you, any, anything that, uh, it wasn't on the agenda. So your consent calendar is set up. Consent is usually used for is routine votes, things that really need, like things that you want to delete off your referral list, things that, that are actually on the plate for the evening that you expect that it will delete, although it's dangerous to do. You should only delete things for the previous meeting. And, and, and then, and then also with respect to appointments, th- this is a relatively new practice. And I'm saying this with, with a concern because what happened at the, at the last meeting is a definite result of not having as of having appointments under your consent calendar. If your appointments to boards and commissions were under the committee's report, which in a normal body, that's where they would be. They wouldn't be under consent. So the committee chair yourself would make a report of the committee's findings and recommendations and each, you could put each name on as a, as an individual vote, or you can put them on as a group, one vote for all. It's, that's how it's been done, had been done up until really recent. And not, not this year group. You know, it's, it's four years, four years ago that started. It's really the new, the new program that we use for the newer program we use for our legislative. It's not a database. It's just, it's, uh, what, what we use to make. Well, let's see, what we use to make agendas and minutes and it's just, it's just too bad. So I thought that a referral to the Rules Committee could re, revisit the agenda lineup and, and take your, your committee appointments and put them under your committee report. You know, they're, they're item of, they're an item to be voted on that night, you know, at that meeting. So why would they be at a consent calendar? They're not root, it's not routine. These are brand new appointments or sometimes reappointments. They're not, it's not routine. So, so that's one thought. The second thought was, what are you doing this for anyway? You have to suspend your rules if you're going to introduce something new to your, your agenda. I mean, you, you can do it as long as it's not a special meeting. Oh darn, it was a special meeting. Can't do it. Even if you do, even if you do suspend your rules, a special meeting is very, very limited. You could only work on the items that are on your agenda. So I, I have to agree, although, you know, I, I know, I know that the town attorney disagreed with my interpretation of the town council rules.
And if, if I can just interrupt you on that point, I have requested and have yet to receive any official or written memo from the town attorney stating their, their viewpoint on this matter. So I, I will take, certainly take the manager's word for it, but I, I would request and actually really formally, and hopefully there is consensus from this committee that we do get that in writing because this is something that could very well happen again, based on what, what happened at our previous meeting.
I mean, it's nothing, nothing against the people that are appointed. They're fantastic people and they're stepping up the plate and that's great. But it's the process and you don't want to have precedent like that sitting out there. Ooh.
Definitely not. And my, my biggest concern, and I'll, I'll get to your, your end, Councillor Westervelt, but my biggest concern was that our committee did make a recommendation honestly, you know, that certainly there is question as to whether some candidates would have had the support at all. But at a bare minimum, if we are putting forth those candidates, uh, I believe it, you know, it is our role to afford them a vote. And procedurally, I just, you know, the, it's not as if they voted or the council voted to remove names from the cal, from, from, uh, you know, from the actual floor. There was, you know, there was a question as to whether or not any can, names were on, you know, on the floor to begin with. And the mayor closed nominations and quite frankly, it, it appeared as if there were only, we could really only vote on those that were the names that were introduced on the floor. A list, by the way, I, I had only seen about 10 minutes before having to vote on it. Um, which was not the case with our recommendations. I mean, we've been vetting these candidates for more than 60 days, uh, maybe, maybe even not up to 90, quite frankly.
Some of them, yeah.
How long ago many of those folks submitted applications? So I hate to belabor this issue. I know we have a lot of, you know, other, other matters on our agenda this evening, but I, I do believe we need to see clarity before we move forward. Just, just some for our notes and purposes, Madam Clerk, have you sworn in any member of the Police and Citizens Committee yet?
Yes, Dana Parfitt and, um, and Tammy Dela Cruz. And she was, she told me that the mayor had appointed her as chair, so.
Okay. All right. In that, that the chair's role, it wouldn't be elected by the actual membership? I thought that was according though.
Well, you know, Yeah, I, I, I sent a message to, uh, the, the, uh, the mayor, what, and asked him about that because it, it really is about the resolution, how the resolution was written. And I, it was late in the afternoon and I didn't pull it out, but, um, I probably have it sitting here. So that's not, it's not gone yet, but you know, like you said, you, you're waiting for a, a attorney's opinion and I don't even think you need one. I think that it's very clear what happened, but I wonder what your other guy needs. Westervelt has his hand up. I don't know if you see that.
Yeah, no, um, so a lot of that, uh, the other night, it did catch me by surprise. And I'll apologize if my language was, um, a little stronger than some would have liked. However, I didn't feel that, um, due process, due process was served. For those of us, you know, we, we sat on the committee, we did our jobs. Due process was ignored. But I would like to point out, because I did go looking for the rule that was violated. And the, I found that the 33rd Town Council rules are not on the webpage. Or at least were not as of last week. So I'm curious to know what did the town attorney use as a basis if the 33rd Town Council rules have not been published?
Oh, they're, they're published now. It took, it only took me four emails to get it done, but it's done.
But was it done before the town attorney gave his opinion?
The, the town attorney had the current rules. The town attorney had the current rules, didn't have to look at the website. I, I looked at my, I looked at mine from my, you know.
I look for it because, and I, I realize this may be a, a moot point because I don't think it actually changed between Town Council, uh, you know, 32nd and 33rd Town Council. However, the paperwork needs to be on point. And if it's not, we need to know why. Things are lagging here. And
you, you voted them in March 1st, I think. So it's not terribly lagged, but you know, I, I did send them out like I'm supposed to, to get posted. I, I don't ever make, this is for anybody else, though.
Yeah, lagged enough that it is affected by what we have done. So, um, basically that's the only point I wanted to make. I, I've got other points, but I'll hold them for a future date because I don't want to hold anybody else up. Um, but I, uh, like I said, I, you know, I appreciate everybody, what you're doing. I thought we, we worked hard and we had some, we had some good comments, some good questions, and I thought we did a good job as a committee. You can always do better. It's my first time doing this. I've done interviews, but I've not done interviews like this, so I just appreciate everybody's patience while we, while we continue, you know, our task at hand. So thank you very much.
And, and I, I will note that, you know, myself, Councillor Westervelt and Councillor McBride are certainly not of like mind politically. I think we represent a diversity of political perspectives and viewpoints in our community. But I, I think the fact, mere fact that so far, and so far, and I, and I foresee and for, you know, for, for the foreseeable future, that we can work together in a collaborative way and, and find consensus, I think speaks volumes. And I, I would implore our whole council, uh, to, to do the same on, on matters, not just relating to personnel appointments, but certainly uh, any other issue we take up. Um, but what, just one point, I, I would stress that two candidates in particular, both Ian Thomas and Kyle Faxon received unanimous support from this committee. And the fact that those two candidates were not afforded a vote by the council, I think is disappointing. If you don't agree with, uh, you know, or do not support them as a candidate, simply vote them down. But, or an applicant, vote them down. Um, but at the bare minimum, afford them to vote. And again, as far as pulling names from consent and not allowing those names to be then brought forth on the floor is just, it, it just procedurally, uh, doesn't add up. So, um, I have a lot of concerns about that. I, I still feel that hasn't been addressed and I hope as a council, we can deliberate this on the future along with, um, maybe a more comprehensive, uh, policies and procedures, a rural review, um, or review for our, um, you know, for the personnel and appointments, uh, moving forward. Um, and I certainly know, um, Clerk McHausser, has indicated she would like to be a part of that process and has reminded us that it really, we, we really ought to take that up very soon. So I fundamentally agree. And, um, does anybody else have communications before we move on to approval of the minutes?
Uh, the only communication, this is, uh, David McBride, would, would be that I would agree with some of your comments of that. The process didn't appear to go as smooth as it should have, and it wasn't as transparent as I would have liked. But hopefully we can move beyond that and improve as we go forward, you know, as a council. So I'll just leave it as that, not, uh, you know, some of the questions you made were good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Captain McBride. All right, now to approval of minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the March 15, 2022 minutes. So moved.
Second, Westervelt.
Motion by Baumgartner, second by Westervelt. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the, um, March 15, 2022 minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose extensions, passes unanimously, 300. Uh, on to new business. We received communications, uh, that, um, Robert Boris withdrew his name from, as a applicant for, um, first, for, that Mr. Robert Boris withdrew his name as an alternate to the Planning and Zoning Commission as he was appointed by Town Manager John Burt to the Economic Development Commission, which does not require a vote of ratification from or by the, by the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. I believe EDC Conservation Committee, if memory serves me, the Retirement Board do not require, um, ratification by Personnel and Appointments. So we still have an alternate vacancy. If you know any folks, uh, Councillor McBride, Councillor Westervelt, or anyone in the public who is interested in serving as an alternate to P and Z, please submit your application to the town clerk's office. Uh, now on to Groton Housing Authority. Um, we have three applicants for the Groton Housing Authority. One, Dane Stevens, a Democrat, 35 North Street, Groton. Joseph Van Green, unaffiliated voter, 612 North Road Mystic, and Denise Taveras, unaffiliated, 78 Nicholas Avenue of Groton. Um, are there any applicants here for an interview?
Denise is here.
Hello Denise.
Hi, how are you?
Hi Denise, great. Uh, welcome to the Personnel and Appointments Committee.
Thank you for having me.
So, um, I see that you have applied for, to the Groton Housing Authority. Um, is this the first board or commission in the town that you have applied to?
It is.
Excellent. And, um, it, I, I hope this isn't too much of a personal question, but are you a, a, I won't use this against you no matter how you answer it, but are you a lifelong resident of Groton or have you, have you lived or? How long have you lived in Groton for?
I, I am. I'm a lifelong resident.
Excellent. And, um, respectfully, um, uh, what, um, what inspired you to, to apply to the Groton Housing Authority?
Um, well, I was actually, um, I had heard that they were looking for somebody, um, actually many years ago. I, I feel like this is the second time that I've heard that they were looking for somebody in accounting for the housing authority. I, that's part of my job. What I do is I like to help people. I'm, I know that they are, uh, they help the low income housing. Affordable, they provide affordable housing for low income and the senior citizens. I also have my, my own properties that I own and manage myself. But I definitely have the background that they're looking for and I feel like I could fulfill their, the requirement of, of assisting with, with financials and the vacancy that's there now.
Excellent. And, um, or, you know, as you mentioned, that they, we received a memo that indicated the personnel, I'm sorry, that indicated the housing authority wa- was looking for somebody specifically with a financial background. Um, and I, I understand that obviously you, you very much meet that, uh, qualification, though it is not a requirement, to put someone on with a financial background. It still was a rec, you know, the request of the committee to have somebody who did eat that criteria. Uh, my question is, uh, how, how do you intend to work with existing members, um, you know, who, who may have served for a long time to bring a, a fresh perspective, which I think is always valuable?
Well, I just think my, my knowledge and background, um, I'd be a good asset to the team. I have, I don't have as much background as the committee, for the committee. Um, I, I just know what they're looking for and I'm interested in helping. I did speak with Bob, um, briefly, uh, to get more background, so, to make sure that I would be able to commit to the open spot. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure really how to answer except for giving my, my experience to assist with the team and and just being there for them.
And, and my last question is, obviously the Groton Housing Authority, or, uh, I shouldn't say obviously, but they, they manage, um, several properties in uh, the town that are, are rent restricted, uh, you know, they're affordable by nature and, um, any folks who do live there are really on a, uh, you know, fixed income and live paycheck to paycheck. And, and, and my eye is what, what will you do to, um, or my question is, what will you do to be their advocates, to be their voices? I mean, obviously it is a balancing act, being the board of being responsible for the organization as a whole, but how do you feel that the organization can, can make a direct impact in the lives of the, the folks who do rely on that? You know, the, rely on our investment in housing and, and, you know, rely on, on that type of housing to be able to survive, quite frankly.
Right. Well, the first step would be to just listen to what the issues on, at hand are, uh, in the meetings, during the meetings. Um, so I would need to get more familiar with the committee and the needs of, of the the residents as well. Uh, but overall, the committee, committee, even though they, they are providing low income housing, they also have, they also need to be able to cover operating expenses and anything else going on, um, with the building. So we need to make sure that not only the needs are met for the residents, but that we're also able to cover any expenses that the committee is incurring and so that we can continue to provide them housing.
Excellent. Uh, I, I have no further questions. I, I very much appreciate you applying for this vacancy, Ms. Taveras. And does, uh, any other committee of councillor have, um, questions for Ms. Taveras? Councillor McBride.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I don't really have too many questions. I did do a review. Well, first of all, I thank you for, uh, committing your, your devotion to this committee. Uh, also want to thank you for putting a resume and an application in. Throughout a lot of the reviews that I've done, some people are just putting in applications and the resume helps significantly, especially with somebody with the experience that you have. Uh, really paints a good picture of, of the financial accounting background, which in conversations I've had with, with Chair Frank throughout the budget process and some other matters, he, he clearly, you know, emailed me a few months ago about the need, you know, he really wanted someone to counter your finance. He actually reached out to me because that's my background to see if there was somebody I had, uh, known that I could recommend and I, and I had recommended a few, but it didn't work out. So I know the need that he has and you certainly have the experience for, uh, what, what appears to be the accounting finance for this position. So, I appreciate your devotion and your time and I, and I hope you, you are able to move forward and uh, if nominee can step up and, and help this committee. So I just wanted to say, uh, thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to add real quick that, and my apologies that I'm not completely prepared for tonight. I, I just wasn't sure. I, I just got a link to join the Zoom meeting. I wasn't sure, um, if, if this was the official interview. And I'm not the best speaker in the world, but I'm great at accounting and I have, I do have the background and the experience. Um, I've worked with Hersha Hospitality, who owns 185 properties across the US, um, since 2015. Um, I've helped, uh, during acquisition of properties, I helped in every step of the way through their growth over the years, um. So I definitely have the experience.
Uh, Councillor Westervelt. You're muted.
I didn't have my hand raised. Um, uh, no, Ms. Taveras, I think you did a great job. Um, I, you may not think you speak well, but you presented yourself very well here. Um, and I appreciate, uh, your experience. And I think you're a valuable, a valuable part of this and I really appreciate that you have decided to, um, to come out for this. So thank you very much. You were well spoken. Um, and you seem to know, um, a lot about, you know, what the needs are and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yes, and I will note for the record, um, that the Groton Housing Authority was created to offer affordable housing for the elderly here in Groton. And since then, their mission has grown to include, uh, housing for you know, folks with, people with disabilities, uh, obviously a growing segment within our own community. And, um, now I believe, uh, they're, they're looking to, you know, making critical investments in their facility. Our, our council has approved, uh, funding to, to do, make such investments. You know, to expand their offerings to, to more folks outside of the elderly and disabled population, even folks you know, who are under, uh, under 30 and, and, you know, who really, uh, do need affordable housing, which I think is, is personally speaking, is lacking in our community. But, uh, especially now. Um, with that, um, I will ask, uh, Ms. Taveras, are, if there are no other questions, I, I have none. I, I just want to thank you again for your indulgence, sharing, um, your perspective on, on, uh, things here in Groton. Um, obviously sharing your qualifications and experiences, uh, that will help guide you should you, um, appoint to this, to the ground housing authority. And if there are no other questions, I will, again, thank you for, um, your interview. It's now complete, if you will. Um, and, and, and thank you again. It's much appreciated and we appreciate you, um, volunteering your, your time to our community. Um, I see no other, um, applicants for this.
Oh, not for this one. Sorry, 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 Chairman. We do have other applicants. Jay Loudon's here, I know that.
Yes, uh, specifically for the housing authority. Uh, my question, uh, Madam Clerk, both, uh, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Green were invited for an interview.
Yes, they were.
Okay, and they, they didn't, uh, they, did they, uh, respond or were they unable to make it?
Not to my knowledge. I know that they were sent the Zoom information also.
Okay. All right, excellent. Um, any deliberations, um, is the, uh, Mr. Councillor McBride?
Yes, I, I'd like to make a motion to move to appoint Denise Taveras, uh, to the Groton Housing Authority Commission.
Uh, motion by, um, Councillor McBride to nominate Denise Taveras to the Groton Housing Authority. Is there a second?
Second, Westervelt.
All right, uh, moved by McBride, seconded by Westervelt. Any discussion?
Um, I, I do have one question, um, with all due respect to everyone here. I don't have the list in front of me of, um, how many spaces are available on this particular, um, committee. Do we have that information?
Just one.
Okay. No, thank you very much.
However, there are vacancies for other boards and commissions. I, you know, I would say there, the one that is most closely aligned or I shouldn't say aligned, but closely related to this, just by nature of it being housing, uh, or related to housing would be the uh, not the Rent Control Commission, uh.
No, not Fair Rent either. It'd be the
Yes.
Also, the Community Development Advisory Board also handles the grants that are used for these, uh, housing units or renovations often. The other good one, they just aren't very busy. They're like four times a year meet.
So ma, I know there, I mean, there's issues there with Democrats or, well, let, let's, let's take up there, there's a motion and we'll, um, so I'll call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of appointing Denise, Denise Taveras, the, uh, Groton Housing Authority, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, uh, passes unanimously, 300. I will note that, as in a great point, uh, Clerk McHausser, um, the Community Development Advisory Committee does have a vacancy. Um, however, it, it cannot be a Democrat that applies because of uh, the issues right now. Too many Democrats serving on that commission. It just would run afoul of, uh, the Minority Representation Statute. Uh, however, the Fair Rent, uh, Commission, as Clerk McHausser stated, uh, does have, I believe for uh, have a few vacancies for the
Right, but they have criteria. There's certain criteria. We need a tenant and we need a landlord.
Landlord, certainly. So I, I would, I would implore, you know, anyone, not just the folks who applied, but I, I, I do want to note that both Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Green are, are highly capable, highly qualified candidates. I think for any border or, or commission. Um, and in no way is it indicative of, you know, them not serving on this commission indicative of, of, um, you know, my, my view on that. So I, I do want to state that on the record. As, you know, both, both of those applicants, you know, folks did submit applications some time ago and As, you know, both both of those applicants, you know, folks did submit applications some time ago, and and I I do hope they. Serve on our Board and Commission can contribute in their own unique ways. So I will move on. Is Mr. Spalding here?
I'm sorry, he did call and say that he could not end this meeting, and he really apologized. He had a big conflict, but. I think you've met him before. I think this committee interviewed him. There's something I can't recall now. Do you recall meeting him before?
No. No.
I don't know a lot about him, but I know that he is Margie Gookin's brother.
Who's brother?
Margie Gookin. She, Margie serves on our beautification committee. What else? She does a lot of things, but she's also Rachel Franco's mother.
I don't know.
That would be me, Mr. Spalding is her uncle.
All right. I'm reading the application, Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I'm not not sure of the proper procedure if we can move forward without an actual. Interview, but I do want to point out that I did speak to several individuals about. This person, I I'm not aware of him, so I did reach out to a few people. They highly supported. Him for this position, so I just wanted to make the the committee aware of that.
Thank you. I I will note the answer. So what what do you know about this board designed to help lower income? Educational background, not applicable. Please list all community organizations which directly involved in none. Do you have any time constraints? No, and no accompanying. No accompanying resume. I understand. I mean, I are refilling this vacancy simply to have a body or we simply, you know, is there a quorum issues, but. I would certainly like to have and speak to some of his application. Just in terms of thoroughness, I mean, we've heard several times in this committee, maybe folks not. Properly submitting an application or insufficiently submitting an application, so I I would, you know, while I. I I just am not comfortable moving forward with this application at this time. Clerk McCauser. Clerk McCauser.
Uh, thank, thank you. I I don't think there's any rush on this appointment, Mr. Chair. The, I think they just finished a lot of their work with a CBD grant. But the. The chairman is Natalie Billing. Oh, Margie Gookins is on this committee, so that would be her brother. Okay, Steve Pierce and Marie Levinson. And Meredith Key is an alternate, so there's an alternate position and a regular position available. So if you're worried about, you know, you can always put, you could always consider as an alternate instead of a full position. That way that the committee chair can vet him, you know.
All right, I I still would like to hear from from Mr. Spalding. Does the council or the any other members have anything or any comment?
Just a just a clarification comment. It looks like Margie, Margie Gookin's term expired, so that in. February, so they're no longer on the committee.
No, that doesn't work that way. Sorry, sorry. These are statute driven boards and commissions and. And are and actually in our charter also states that if a term expires on a board or commission, the commission number remains. Of of serving until someone else replaces them. But they should, it's up to the chairman to to reappoint, ask for reappointments, and it's probably just been lax, that's all.
So they still have four of it, so it's not a necessary requirement. To fill that, I guess, back to your original point, Congress.
Yes, and and I would imagine is this. When 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 did Mr. Spalding submit an application?
According to the application, it was March twenty-first, so it's not that very old either.
Oh, so that it still wouldn't meet the sixty day threshold either?
Not yet.
All right, so we can't even take action on it tonight. All right, so given that in nature, I mean, we can't vote on it, folks. So we'll have to move this on. Would we even be able to take this up at the next meeting, or would we have to take this up in the in the June meeting?
I have to do the math, I'll let you know in a second.
All right, you know, we we can take that up. We'll 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 take that up offline, because we've got a few more things to get through. All right, so. All right, now on to reappointment to of the Harbor Management Commission. Patrick Flaherty, unaffiliated voter, a term expiring nine one twenty twenty-four, and Matt Littick, Republican. Alternate. Nine one twenty-two twenty twenty-four. I will make a motion to reappoint Patrick Flaherty to the Harbor Management Commission. So move.
Westerveld.
Motion by Bumgardner, second by Westerveld. Any discussion? I would just note that the. This applicant is interested and ready to serve again in the Chair of the Harvard Management Commission. Supported or would like to see Mr. Flaherty reappointed to this. And he's an active and involved member. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions passes unanimously three zero zero. Now on to Matt Littick. The alternate to the. I'll make motion to reappoint Mr. Matt Littick to the Harbor Management Commission.
Seconded.
That was McBride, right?
Yes.
All right, motion by Bumgardner, second by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention passes unanimously three zero zero. We have one more item. This is regarding the Town Council Liaison to the Citizen and Police Committee.
You forgot the Shellfish Commission.
Oh, geez, you're right. I'm reading the. The original, the mailed copy here. All right, before we do that. Mr. Loudon, is he still on?
Yes, he is. I don't know if he has allowed to talk. Let me try to get him to talk.
I'm unmuted.
There we go.
You're loud, and how are you?
I'm very well, thank you.
It's great to see you and hear from you again.
Can you see me?
We we can't see you, but we can surely hear you.
Thus the name Loudon.
Indeed. So again, thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. I have gotten to to see you in action the last few months as a. Curious onlooker from the outside. You know, very eager to join the Shellfish Commission. It's my understanding you have attended. No shortage of Shellfish Commission meetings over the last few months or or quite some time now. And. You know, you are not a member. You have applied. You submitted an application for the. Shellfish Commission, unfortunately, or there were too many Democrats as alternates, so. Yeah, a little bit of a shakeup on the commission to allow for you to take a spot as. An alternate on the commission. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'd actually read the Charter and took note of the. Minority representation requirements.
Well, I I I would stress that while that, you know, certainly there is a reason for. Having that statute on the books. In no way have I ever seen it actually impact the. At the Shellfish does, I probably the most nonpartisan commission we have in town. You do yeoman's work for a community. It's an all volunteer board. You quite frankly, do the work of a paid staff, in my opinion. And I I think you would be an excellent candidate for this, as we basically already done this with you, and so. Do you have any words or 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 things you would like to share with this group, this body?
Only that I'm pleased to be able to have the opportunity to continue in. Grotton, what I did for several years. At the other end of the state in Greenwich. It was interesting work, and it's a, it's an industry with which I have a long. Association, either directly or through my family, and so the opportunity to continue to be involved with that. Is an attractive opportunity for me.
Thank you, and I saw the Clerk McCauser's hand was raised.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. I love the Shellfish Commission, but. You, I have to run and and start another meeting at the Town Hall Annex, but you have in front of you. Switcheroo's, so it allows you to appoint Mr. Loudon to that alternate position, so. I'll leave it to you. Don't forget to stop the recording. Before you leave, okay?
All right, we'll do.
All right, have a good evening.
You too, Clerk McCauser. Have a good night.
Take care, Pluton.
All right, any any questions from the committee?
I don't have a question. I saw a comment that I want to thank him for coming out. The application that that Mr. Loudon provided showed the wealth of experience he has, and just I think it's great that he's helping out, and. What you spoke about, Andres, he seems to be very involved, so just thank you for your your dedication to help Grotton.
My pleasure.
All right, seeing no other discussion, I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Jay Loudon. To the Shellfish Commission, if the term. To the get, to the, oh, I don't have the term expiration, but there's only one vacancy, so. Alternate vacancy on the Shellfish Commission, so moved.
I'll second McBride.
All right, motion by Bumgardner, second by, seconded by Mr. Counsel McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Congratulations again, Mr. Loudon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Loudon. Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure. I look forward to working with. Dick Conant, the chairman, who is remarkably motivated to do all the things that. Make the shell fishing industry in our area a very successful and very safe one.
If I may say, I've known Dick for a long time. He's a great guy, so.
He really is. I agree with that.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Jay. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Bye now.
Bye bye.
Counsel McBride.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question. In reading through this. Are we supposed to take action on moving Paul Watts from the regular position to an alternate?
Was that?
Looks like there was a change of.
I see, I don't think that required counsel action, but do you, maybe to to be safe, do you want to make that motion, Counsel McBride?
Certainly, I'll make a motion to. Move current member Paul Watts from his regular position to an alternate position.
Also, Westerveld.
All right, so motion by McBride, second by Westerveld. Any discussion? All right, and again, just to clarify, Counsel McBride, this is to shift. Paul Watts. To, did you say Paul Paul Watts?
Yes, Paul Watts from the regular position to the to an alternate position.
All right. So seeing no other dis. Discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. All right, I will make a motion to. Shift counsel or current alternate member Jay Kane to the regular member position. So move.
Second.
Motion by Bumgardner, second by, was that Westerveld?
It's McBride.
Oh, McBride, okay. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Excellent. Last item, we have Melinda Kessiri. Submitted an application to serve as the Town Council Liaison to the Citizen and Police Committee. Is there any discussion? I will note, and I appreciate Counsel Kessiri for submitting an application. Again, this is a committee that is brand new. That certainly, you know, I again, I would stress that our group. You know, made an effort to appoint members that represented a broad, broad. Perspectives and viewpoints in our community that weren't aligned with, you know, one group more than the other. And based off of the events that we saw in our previous council meeting. I I believe that our liaison should be reflective of a person who. You know, who, I don't want to say doesn't have any skin in the game, but. I I would note that Counsel Kessiri submitted the alternative. Slate for, you know, made that motion for an alternative slate to approve by our our count, our committee, and so. I I don't see Counsel Kessiri here to to speak to us, but I was hoping we could talk about. Sort of what, again, what her views of that committee are, considering that she has very much attempted to shape the. The body in a way that, you know. That was reflective of of her own viewpoints, and I mean that with all respect. I I very much enjoy serving. With Counsel Kessiri. I think she's very capable and able of serving on any any board or commission in our community or. As our liaison, but she is our council's voice, and I I do believe. That our council should have someone speaking on our behalf that is. You know, that, you know, does not, it speaks for all of us, not not just a certain viewpoint, and so. I I just want to put that out there. This was an application. Usually, we honor the sixty days. I don't know if we necessarily have to for counselors, but we received this application on April fourteen. Which was in, you know, that we received this application on April fourteen, and in the corner of our our agenda here, this agenda was printed on the fourteenth, so. I I do wish Counsel Kessiri was here to speak to that. She has been attended all of our previous. Meetings for interviews of other candidates, so does does any other counselor have questions or or comments?
This is.
No, go ahead, David, please.
I I was just going to say. I I would be supportive of Counsel Kessiri because of her experience. I I know we want a broad viewpoints from the community and from every every committee we have, but I would. I I'm supportive of her moving forward. I'm not sure if there's a rush to do this today, so not necessarily supportive of moving forward today if we don't need to. If there's desires to ask questions and so forth, but I am supportive of of her work and her. Her background on this committee, so I would be supportive of that, but I'm also, if this committee needs more time and wants to see if there's other. Counselors that have interest, I'm all for, you know, delaying a month or so if that's needed, but I am supportive of her based upon our experience. And I think we do need experienced people in these positions, so that's that's kind of where I stand.
Thank you, Counsel McBride. Counsel Westerveld.
I don't. While I think Counsel Kessiri is an outstanding individual and would be great on any board. I just think right now there's a, there are still a lot of. I just think right now there's a, there are still a lot of questions surrounding the entire makeup of this commission. And I think we still have a lot of questions to ask and a lot of, you know, answers to get. I do appreciate her applying, but at this time I could not support her.
Thank you. I think there is consensus that this, this body is not willing to move forward with recommendation at this time. And I don't want to speak for, for either of you in saying that there isn't, you know, we're, we're not going to, you know, appoint her. I, I, I would agree with Counsel McBride that we can give this a month. Wait to see if there's any other interest from the council on this. I would note that, you know, Counsel Kessiri, you know, she is a former police officer and we very much thank her for her service. She is an outstanding, you know, a public servant, you know, giving back to our community and getting involved. And, you know, she, I don't know if she is a millennial, but she, she is part of, you know, our young guns in our, in our group. And, you know, so I, I just think I would caution our group from moving forward just based off of some of the events surrounding this commission, this committee in the last, or the police and citizens committee in the last few weeks. But, you know, again, me not being comfortable moving her name forward, I know it's not indicative of how I personally feel about her or, you know, what I believe her contributions are and can be to our council and to our community. So I just want to make that abundantly clear. And very much respect her for, you know, her service to our, our community and certainly as a former police officer. Counsel, is that Counsel Board along?
Yes, thank you. I didn't submit an application. I'll just be kind of frank right now. Based on the events of what happened last time and just people blanketly shooting folks down for whatever reasons. And I kind of felt why waste my time if I was able to move out of this committee to the council based on the actions and the lack of support and engagement that I've received and the disrespect that I've received thus far and have been receiving since the beginning. My husband, when I would, I was asked the last council meeting to recuse myself, which there's no financial gain. My husband, who works in the prison system, put his name forward on the RTM and created the whole court committee that started this whole group. And yet, you know, he couldn't even take a seat. And it just seems very contentious. And unfortunately, it seemed as if, or it felt as if, whatever their feelings are, you know. So with that being said, I do think again, as a female of color, a minority with two males and all the recent events in our history that have happened in my, my criminal justice background as a major, I think I'd be a great candidate as a person who's grown up here and has, you know, a lot of experience. I've considered putting my application in, but it comes with some hesitation based on the events and, and the mistreatment and the feelings of feeling boxed out and not validated. So maybe I will submit my application and I would, I hope I could have your guys' support. And then again, it would come down to the council and we'll see where that takes us. But there's a bit of apprehension based on how things have, have come out. And again, I, I do think that there needs to be some relook or response as to how things are happening. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Board along. And I will just note that in no way do I, I feel like, or in no way do I, would I do anything to try to box you out and nor do I think I've done anything to, to do that. And, and certainly I think you can speak to that. And so just for the, maybe folks who don't have context or know, or maybe viewing this meeting for the first time, I very, very, very much respect Counsel Board along and appreciate her contributions to our community and, you know, believe her, her service on our council has been impeccable. So thank you for that, Counsel Board along. And any, any other comments from counselors? On this item. All right. So I see no other item on this agenda. I want to thank the, the, this committee for their indulgence this evening. If there's nothing else, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Second, Westerville.
All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen, and have a wonderful evening.
Good night, everyone. For just say hi to you and y'all have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.